Do you want one of the newsletters? Do you want one of the newsletters?
Yeah.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
It's all the twice. I always forget. Usually.
First application on that.
Yeah. What should I do? Are you working right?
Supervisor. Fresh. So just.
Oh, yeah.
You have a beer and you just say that around him?
Is that copy there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I got her.
You've got to take that patient to get one.
Yeah.
I already got her, Jeff.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, we started at 12:00. I think she's asleep right now.
Or Matt, I'm gonna call it perfect now for that.
In my own thoughts.
The answer does not want that either because then he's a driver.
No, I'm.
You did already send me that and I can just.
Yeah, this is the last one. Yeah.
I'm gonna call it back.
I'm gonna be there soon.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Obviously unusual attendance, which we will slightly explain in the near future. But Lee is on his way, so we will have a forum. And if you would all join me standing for the flip, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, united, invincible, liberty and justice for all.
And Lori, you want to do a roll call?
Renee? Here. Good job.
Eric.
Lori is here. And you said Lee's on his way.
Lee is on his way. Kerry has a work thing, Noah has a personal thing. There's your informants today that he was going to a different work. And so we will have a forum, but we don't at this time, so we won't sit and vote on things. But nevertheless, we can have some of our reports presented. And if we want to go ahead and start with, I'll start with Steve. Steve, also a couple of people wanted to know a little bit more about you. If you want to take a couple of minutes, who you are, and then give our zoning board appeals report. I would appreciate it.
So my name is Steve Kerr. I'm the new zoning administrator. Originally from Lowell, Michigan. My wife's originally from Muskegon. So I'm a transplant. Lived in Muskegon for about four years. I have a Bachelor of Science in Geography and Land use Planning from Central Michigan University. And I worked for eight years for a signage contractor pulling permits, doing zoning research, pursuing variances and planning commission applications as well. I look forward to working with you guys on zoning issues. If you ever want to talk or get to know me a little more, you can just stop in. I'm usually in unless I have to go to an appointment. But the door will be open. Come on in. The August 23th zoning board of appeals meeting. Supervisor Jeff Martin gave a presentation of the new zoning enforcement process. The board also wrote three variance requests and one enforcement action. The zoning board of appeals granted a variance to allow an electronic changeable message sign to be added to an existing nonconforming Tylon sign for Asmartware at 5484 Old Road. The ZBA also granted a variance for an accessory building to be built in the required front yard setback of a corner lot between the principal building and the secondary street curmudgeon at 3374 East Riley Thompson. The ZBA heard an administrative appeal of an enforcement action as part of the new enforcement process. First, 3335 East Tyler Road. They upheld the enforcement process and determined that the violation did exist and that due process had been followed. Finally, the ZBA denied a variance for reduction in the required side yard setback of a deck exceeding eight inches in height above established grade at 6470 Middleway Road.
Perfect. Thank you much, Steve. And would you be ready with your reports as well, Helen?
I'm just going.
Yeah. We don't want to let them waste time.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay. Uh, we'll start out with probably the coolest getting out of this thing ever. Ministry of Development, Dr. Frerber, we ran 116 calls for service last month, which is astronomically a lot for us. We averaged about 64. So we're in double what we did. We did it still following NPA guidelines still, but there are about two minutes under the federal minimum standards, so we're better than minimum. Which puts us now about, as of this morning, 183 calls up for service for last year, which was 100 calls up before. So pretty embarrassing. I came here in 2010, we ran 604 calls as of this afternoon. We are now officially at 681 calls for services. Still have three months to go. Which in turn tells us that we're a bit easier and with the same or less, which is taxing, but what other guys, but once again, I've got nothing bad to say about them. They have just done phenomenal. Just finished up Thunderbird Race Track for the season again. Again, those who don't know, we spend, we put two employees out there, paid for by the race track. We put two staff out there for whatever between five to nine dollars on Saturday, taking care of anybody that happens to be at Thunderbird. It's a devil's sword. I lose people because they're there, but then again, providing service to the citizens no matter what, we still have to be there. And by, by the standards who are for zoning, who are planning, Mr. Fraggs insurance requires him to have EMS service there. So he chose, you could pick up the Eagles company, you could pick anybody you wanted, and he picked us, which was a problem, but right the fourth year now running it, he's been gracious to us, he's cared the staff, so actively finished it out. No major incidents this year that we need to speak of. They've done quite well with the staff, just done an amazing job up there, so I think. The next is a tough decision, and unfortunately, there's not enough here to help me make my decision. So I'm going to turn to the citizens. Just make it, yeah. You understand a decision that I just want to make. With the uptick of COVID, as everybody knows, in exactly 30 days, we'd be out of fire prevention in our house. I am personally struggling if I want to do it this year. I understand everybody's sense. I, I, I will speak this amount, though it's on camera now. You don't care your political affiliation. As everybody knows, I am nonpartisan. I will not speak either side. I don't care what you believe. I don't care if it's a bad flu. I care that if I bring 800 people in my building in two hours and two of my guys go out with COVID, I don't have people to run protect our citizens. Do you want free hot dogs or do you want quality people? That's where I sit right now. I'll tell you right now, I've polled the staff and I've got a responsibility. Don't, don't think we don't want to do this. We love doing that. We bled for it, we're ready for it. I, I, I just don't want my staff to get sick. My staff, I have one person who did not get sick from a response. He got sick on his own time. He's still on steroids. It's been six weeks and he still can't walk a flight of stairs and he's third. I, I don't know. I was looking for anybody's okay. I know it's committing suicide the way I decided. I'm a hero, I decided not to do it. I'm not. I would hope that the citizens know how much we put forth for, for them, that they would understand the most important, I've said a thousand times in meetings I speak here, my staff is the most important thing. And I don't, I don't care what we call it, I don't. I just don't want us to see the process of them getting sick and I don't have people. And then, so I'm not saying it's not gonna happen. I just want him to be aware. And what I would prefer is, is I'll speak incorrectly politically. Our keyboard warriors get out there, start bashing me because I did this. Do me a favor, step up, find a keyboard and come talk to me in my office. I, I, I don't do well with that. I, I, out of all your press statement, if we choose to do that, I will tell you, several organizations have either scaled back or stopped theirs as well. There are some that are doing.
So I'll.
I don't know.
I'll let you know, so what I think on this, personally, I would just prefer to have it, but we're already spread real thin. We're already in a logistically challenging situation with fire. 116 calls for the month, that's a record, correct? It's an all-time record?
All-time.
It's an all-time record.
1935.
So we're setting all-time records for number of calls. We're already short on people. I know fire is split, but I think a little more than 50/50. I'm completely fine in that situation with you not having it for the year. That's where I'm at.
And I appreciate that. And again, any citizens that's been here in mind 10 years knows that, that, that we strive for that. Again, I'm not saying we're not gonna do it. If something changes in the next 10 to 12 days, then, then we will. I just, I have a hard time, everybody knows they want the ferry truck rides. I'm gonna pack 30 people shoulder to shoulder on that fire truck for four hours and, and I'm gonna have it written in the same building. My kids jumping around in a bounce house. I'm not saying, yeah, the part I will say for both sides is that this isn't anything against the board. You man, you called an ordinance and said you do not require masks. I can't enforce that. I can suggest it, but I also don't want that to turn into a political hotspot where everybody comes in and asks to have their, their political, it's not. I'm sorry, it's not about your politics and my firehouse.
Correct.
We're honored, we're honored years or 75 years to tradition and repeated by progress for politics. I mean, we just let us do our thing, but I'll, I'll do the right thing. I just, I still have about six of this staff I need to talk with and we're gonna decide. And like I said, I've got, I've got three that are staunch, let's do it. And I've got another four that are no, and I've got two that are on defense. And I still got four more to go, so. And I, and I honestly, I I don't know where I sit. Truth is because I, I care about folks and I care about my staff. And I, I, if you all want to know, it keeps me up at night, it's crap like that. Besides calls, but yeah, I just wanted to put it out there on record. Again, I'm not saying we won't. I just don't have the answer yet. Again, it would, in theory, would be October 13th from, from 6 to 8. But I, I, I just.
Well, it's a funny thing, but doing the job has to be the priority.
I just.
I completely get that. And I completely appreciate everyone in the audience being quiet. Well, because obviously we're participating in this. And if anyone has comments on that, if you want to in either comment session express those comments, I appreciate that.
Probably 70% of you have my cell phone. Call my cell phone.
Or you can do that.
Seriously, doors are always open, please.
Call 911.
You call me, I'll, I'll show up. But yeah, I, 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 and I know some of the citizens have helped us and I, and I appreciate their help. I just, but I also don't want to expose that. It, and I'm not saying it's gonna happen. It's a really, really bad flu, whatever, whatever. I don't, I'm not getting into pathophysiology, but I just, I just don't know. I hate saying that I don't have an answer when it comes to my firehouse, but this is, this has been a couple of weeks ago. So if you'd asked me this two weeks ago, we were game on.
Hey, Chief?
Yes, sir.
What are keeping you up at night? Just go with your gut feeling.
We trust you.
Drink my coffee. Yeah, I know. And that's what, that's, I mean, I appreciate that, that's, and, and to a joke, Gibbs, maybe you watch an MCI, it's Gibbs gun. I always call it the style of stunner because yeah, I usually go with my guns. I just don't, my guts tell me this time. My guts half saying yeah, half saying no. That's the part I struggle with, so. It's a ritual fact this week. Well, I don't know, Tom, run a call, I'll keep thinking about it. But again, if, if any of you please, I have four, yes, I, 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 now, you're not gonna hurt my feelings. I just, I want to know what the community thinks is the best for us. Am I gonna have some hate me? Come on. Other than that, squad's still on track. We still have two on leave of absence. That's another issue that I have, two that are, one is, is working up in Traverse City. Actually, I got to see him this weekend. The other one is had a, a new baby, so I'm down two more guys. I was just informed today that our dispatch center has four of their dispatchers that are now out, which then now increases more overtime. And those who don't know, three of my staff work for 911. So I mean, potentially there's three more being, being theirs, now five down. Staff 17. Want to get more people? I'd love to have more people. If you know anybody that needs help, call me. Nobody's knocking the door down because they don't want to spend 300 hours the next 11 months training to have to spend another 12 hours a month plus calls. Who's gonna want to do it? And if you don't want to step in, thinking, oh, we bad stuff. That's where we be stepping in. The last thing I have for those that don't know, and I, thanks to any product I'm officially ordering, as of last, recent capital, this is now my 33rd year of stepping. You could, we stepped this on mine, so. Thank you for the opportunity for me to continue to stay here as an employee. Who's just yesterday now, unfortunately officially kicked me to the top of the total pole and I don't like it up there, so. For those that were worrying, no, I'm not going anywhere anytime soon. Like, probably about 10 years, so. Other than that, I'm gonna drink my coffee with the rest of me and try and get over stuff.
Yeah, I've got one further thing later.
Oh, yeah. As you know. Other than that, I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you much, Chief. We'll move back to the being in order on this. And so we have noted that Lee has arrived. We're back to the approval of the agenda. Let me give a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Go to second. Any discussion? My discussion would be that with the adjustments we've made currently, because that was slightly out of order.
Yeah.
Everyone's finding that good. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We are to the approval of past meeting minutes. And I do have a note on one of these on August 9th. It is the second to last sentence. It says the page is starting to allow everyone voice their opinions with censure. That should be without censure.
Okay. Oh, without. Sorry. So I'm gonna have to send it to you now.
Other than that, all good. Do I have a motion to approve the past meeting minutes?
A motion to approve the August, it was August 9th, is that?
We can do both meeting minutes together.
And both August 9th and August 31st meeting minutes.
Perfect, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hear none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the treasurer's report. Now, treasurer's report was late, so I know you guys did not get it on Wednesday or over the weekend. I ended up getting it over the weekend, so it was just the day. Yours is probably still in your box, Lee, because it was just put on there this morning. So we don't have it for examination. We don't vote on the treasurer's report anymore. That used to be a thing. I know a lot of you probably remember that. And for legal reasons, it's probably best that we put it out in file. It's not voting for approval, so I will say that we put that on file. Perfect. Next, we have paying the bills. And do we have a motion to pay the bills?
I have a motion to pay the bills.
Do we have a second? Will you support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call voting.
Renee? Yes, ma'am. Please.
Jeff?
Yes.
Lori, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the Florida Department of Labor Report, which we've already been through. And we have the planning commission report, if you would, Lee.
See, the planning commission report for August 31st. There's a couple, quite a few things on there. Well, one's actually on the agenda right here. That says, there's amendments to site ordinance, just some errors, corrections. Next, there was a special use permit applied for for 3207 Whitehall Road for a boat, boat dealer slash pro golfer dealer. There we go. Now, we approved, approved the motion. An unfinished business, there is a land use or a special use for a ground mounted solar array. It was on the list for a while. Some information came in that needed and we approved that. Next on the agenda was a special site plan review for the 3207 for the boat dealer. That was approved. Another site plan review for 3820 Central Road for Schultz subject. Their original building, it burnt down and they're rebuilding. They, they came here because originally they didn't have a site plan. It was, I think they bought it recently. It's been there for a while, burnt down, but they're gonna change the orientation of the building, so that requires a new site, site plan review. Next, there was a site plan review for a Class A marijuana grow facility on Sweeter Road. There was a motion to be tabled for more complete building plans to satisfy planning commission requirements. And last, there was another special, oh my gosh, site plan review for 32237 Old Road for McDonald's, maybe remodeling, taking, taking the play place off and changing some parking, something like that.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Lee. Yes, busy planning commission meetings. We already had the zoning board appeals report presented. We hear two public comments. If you would come up to lecture and state your name and address if you would like, talk three minutes on anything that's on the agenda for the ORV and golf cart. Assuming some people are here for that because those are hearings. We will have separate public comment when we get to those in the agenda. Now, if there's anything on the agenda, anyone would like to speak on, feel free to come up to the lecture.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The one about the fire charges. Are we gonna be discussing that?
We're gonna be discussing it.
In the discussion.
I just wanted to make sure. If you get past us.
Perfect. All right. There are no public comments. We will move on to our decision items. The first one is ordinance 2021-12 zoning ordinance error corrections, which we just heard Lee mention in that we've changed some things in zoning over the last few months. And because of that, we found that one of, at least one of the charts wasn't fully updated with some of those changes, so that the written parcel disagreed with some of the things in the chart. And there are a few other corrections in there, some, some error correction. So that's what is included here. And do we have a motion?
A motion to approve ordinance number 2021-12.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's roll call votes.
Lee? Renee? Yes, ma'am. Lori, yes. Jeff?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have land sale on Russell Road. And included in here is our estimate for these parcels that have come up. And these are the ones that we saw last month. And we put up for bid for a minimum of $25,000. And so we're looking for we're, well, we got one. So this came in today at 2:15. We have one land bid, so I will open that now. All right. The bid amount is $26,000 even. And the minimum was set at 25.
I make a motion to approve the sale of the parcels. Do I have to read them all?
I don't think we have to read them all.
The parcels listed for $26,000. I'll second that.
Motion and second. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Renee? Yes, ma'am. Lee? Yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Landed and sold. Next, we have a land sale request is on Lake Drive. And the description of parcels in here as well, along with an estimate, which is between 20 and $25,000 for these parcels if we want to work them up for bid. Do we make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the sale of the parcels for a minimum of $25,000.
Make a motion for a minimum of $25,000. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So do I, Laura? Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call votes.
Renee? Yes, ma'am. Lori, yes. Lee?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes. Motion passes. It is up for sale and we'll open those bids next month. Next, we have Catalpa Park Toilet Tank. And I brought this, I brought this to the board a couple of months ago. And there's been ongoing discussion about it. Maybe somewhere around 15 years ago, there was a vault toilet at Catalpa Park. It burned down as, as far as I can tell from information I've gathered from people. It was cleared up as far as that's concerned, but the holding tanks were left in the ground, which is, is a safety concern. We got quotes on it, it's been there for a long time. Some local kids get frogs out of there, go fishing, that type of thing. And the issue with it is, when I brought it before, it's not something I need to bring to the board. I could approve. I just brought it to the board because I like bringing lots of things to the board as the board has noticed. And the issue with leaving it there is that we wouldn't allow a normal person, we wouldn't allow a resident or, or someone else that, with commercial property to leave this in place. So it's essentially like the township has been violating our own policies that we would normally follow for someone else for 15 years, which I don't particularly like. Plus, it is just an ongoing safety concern. It's right next to a lake, so it really shouldn't be there that way as well. Although that time has probably passed, so it seems like something we should just do and get taken care of. Because the board had some questions, I have reached out and got another quote. Now, the other quote that we ended up getting is twice as much as the first one. And because, first vote was back in May, price might have changed a little bit. I'm not exactly sure on this. It's gonna be around $2,000 to get that crushed and taken out and pumped as well. So I am looking for a motion if someone would like to, if it's taken care of, or I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve having the pit toilet tank at Catalpa Park removed. Support by Lee. Any other discussion? No? Hearing none, let's roll call votes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Renee? Yes, ma'am. Lori, yes.
Perfect. Motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 2021-11 for the ORV hearing. So I assume some people are here to talk on this. And I met with the road commission this morning about a variety of things. And they offered another letter in our packet files. I included their first letter that cites MCL where they have the, that's the Michigan legal code, where they have the ability to limit the roads that could be done like 30% and that type of thing. They were going to come here and speak against it, but upon for the review, they are not going to do that. So I'm gonna open up the hearing. I'll read their letter first, the small letter, and then anyone that also wants to make public comment definitely. Call the habit section to open. And the letter that I got from the road commission this morning is very short. Dear Jeff, thank you for the opportunity to comment on your ORV slash golf cart ordinance. It is our recommendation based on safety concerns that the following road segments be exempt from ORV slash golf carts. Lake Lake Drive entire length, Riley Thompson Road entire length, River Road entire length, Russell Road entire length, Whitehall Road entire length. Sincerely, N. Allen. If there is any other public comment on the ORV, and we will have golf carts next, but if there's any public comment on the ORV, if you would please come up to the lecture and let us know what you think. Seeing none. All right. I thought this was going to be the popular one. We will roll in public comment. All right. And obviously, we've all taken a look at this. It's been discussed a few different times. It's big in the area now, it's big in the counties and might here discussed more. There were ordinances passed in Aggleston Township and in Hopin Township. Those are somewhat controversial because they did not go through the process, which is why we had to delay it for a few months to get the proper notices, go through the proper process. And Lori basically just followed the state laws in writing this up because if you don't do all of that, you run into various trouble in that the legality of the ones in Aggleston and Hopin are challenged and might end up in court. I know Aggleston is re-going through the process to try to I know Aggleston is re-going through the process to try to make it proper and the road commission's fine with that. Hopon is taking a different approach and I have talked to him about that. And I talked to a DNR officer that said she could write tickets in either one of those townships right out and they would be legitimate, which would then go to court. So by delaying this for a few months and coming through this process, we've avoided that legal hassle at least. And that was the that was the basic idea of trying to do it properly. I signed twenty-eight notices by hand, I believe, to send them out to all the municipalities in the area. So I believe that we will be the first township in the county to do it correctly. In a way that works. On this, do we have, do we have a motion for your part?
I moved a motion to adopt the ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash eleven to establish an off-road vehicle ordinance in Dalton Township.
Do we have a second?
We need to add these rules.
That's correct, because of that letter because of the legal, the road commission to do it anyways. There's there's speed limit ones in there. Obviously US thirty-one, the highway you can't ride a four wheeler on, and that applies to M-one-twenty as well because those are state roads, so those are already covered, no one has to do anything, you can't, no one has. But these various road restrictions, we should add into the motion.
Okay.
And when I talked to the road commission, they would also feel more comfortable for maintenance on the side of the roads if the money that we were doing for registration or fines, any money like that, will go towards roads, which I don't think is officially laid down in there, but we were already looking at and planning on doing, which makes them more comfortable. I don't think that has to be part of the motion. By adding the restrictions recommended by the road commission, that would make sense to be part of the motion.
Agreed.
So what motion are we looking at, if you could clarify for us, Laura?
Okay, she's moving to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash eleven to establish an off-road vehicle ORV ordinance in Dalton Township with the road restrictions um listed by the Muskegon County Road Commission and yes.
Perfect, so we have the motion by Renee, do we have a support?
I'll support that.
Support by Lori, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lori, yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash ten for the golf carts. And I'll open the public hearing. That same letter from the road commission mentioned ORV or golf carts, you've obviously all heard that. If anyone has any comments to say about the golf cart ordinance, if you would come up to lecture. Alright, hearing none, I will close the public comment. And on this, we wanted to separate them because there are some some differences uh among them. And when we first started looking into this, I know it's been a huge debate in the area for a number of years and people wanted something to be done with it. I completely understand why politicians don't do things like this because it's a pain, but nevertheless, I'm here to tackle as many problems as I can and it's easier to just leave this stuff in ignorance. Nevertheless, I would like to move through it in some way, which we are. And my first initial concern been with safety with ORVs and golf carts. So the first thing I did was talk to Sheriff Poole. He said accidents don't increase where you see these things pass because it's already happening in those places. And the golf cart ordinance, I believe, is it largely based off the state law at this point? Because we went through several curations, or is it based a lot off of the North Muskegon?
It's based off the state, I mean using using some of the state, but it's based, I took everything from the state of Michigan because it's just easier to do it that.
Right, and I think it still comes up pretty closely.
Yes, yes.
Because Poole was saying that North Muskegon's has worked well for them, so excellent. Do we have a motion?
I moved to adopt ordinance number dash state number twenty-twenty-one dash ten to establish a golf cart ordinance in Dalton Township.
With road restrictions.
With road restrictions as stated by the road commission.
Perfect, do we have a second?
I'll support that.
Laura, sports, any other discussion?
I would like to say something about it.
Yeah?
Um, we live on um East Twin Lake and I've noticed a lot of golf carts this summer that I have in the past and I don't know if it's just because I'm more aware of them, but I'm noticing a lot of younger people. And on the way here to this meeting, there was a girl that couldn't have been more than twelve driving and she had three kids on the golf cart right there in front of the park. And I don't know if, I mean, obviously she would get in trouble if there was a sheriff, but I'm concerned that because we're addressing this now, we're bringing it up into the light and people are going, alright, we can just do whatever we want. And that's what I'm seeing and I'm, I've only gone hard before, I do like the freedom. I'm glad that we're addressing it, but I'm not happy with what I'm seeing are so far with what the residents are doing, especially when it comes to people that aren't over sixteen.
Right, I think it is.
Yeah, I just wanna make a public note of that. I hope people will use that more in discussion and common sense.
Yeah, that makes sense, and even originally when I'd written my drafts, it was could be more restrictive for people with driver's licenses. But it's quite a bit more restrictive than the state and hopefully, hopefully that type of thing. I put in the saying, you don't see too much of an increase. And I think a lot of people have been driving dangerously on those types of things with kids driving them for for years.
Right.
It's a common thing, I remember doing it as a kid.
Right.
And I'm hoping that settles out now that something is officially in place, that it's, you know, just follow the follow the rules. Like you're, you're, you can do it, there is a path for doing it. And just follow the steps for doing it and hopefully the recommendations. Yeah, having a bunch of kids riding around on roads and no matter what they're riding in is scary. I I get scared when I pass a kid on a bike.
But for me, when I'm seeing them driving these on, and it was on the road, they were on, those children were on the road and as not only his driving, but also passengers. And I just thought, this, you know, who? Where are the parents, why would anybody love their kids, I don't know.
Right.
Just gonna see them on the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that makes sense. Any other board comments? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lori, yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we are on to our discussion items. And the first one is fire charges. Now, this, the reason this came up is because this spring, we had a ton of fires in the drought when there was a burn ban. And we looked into, should you charge people when they're starting forest fires when there's burn ban, this type of thing. Which it only makes sense in that type of situation, I think almost everyone supports that. Plus, when you dive into the details, it can get decently complex on figuring out who is responsible. How much you're supposed to charge them is actually the easy part because they all can just calculate that. Uh, but when when you should have that occur and when not, when it moves over property lines and that type of thing. Looking into it, there was an ordinance passed in two thousand which states that there would after that be a resolution put in place for the details of fire charging people. That cannot be found, so apparently they put the ordinance in place, tried to dive into the details of how that would actually work out. I assume they got bombed down, the resolution never took place. So it's one of those problems that I've stumbled across and I'm going to try to put together and resolve. Looking into that, there's a disparity of opinions because in that, in that simple case, almost everyone is for charging. I know that some people for car accidents, they think that just simply the insurance should be charged. I talked it over with fire and with the firefighters. And in general, they wanna be on the conservative side of this because people are already paying taxes, people already voted in villages. We know fires behind, so they can definitely use more money. But they don't think that this would be the best way of going and getting a bunch of more money is charging people when they go on calls in addition to the taxes they already pay. And so the proposal is, we don't have anything to vote on yet, it will be written up here in the near future, is to say that fire charges would be implemented when it has been found that someone is guilty in court. And does that sound correct, everything I say in there correct now?
Yes, yeah, yes, yeah.
If there's anything you want to just go ahead.
Consumers' power, it 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 started with consumers' power after, you know, I can't, we're allowed to 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 we were allowed to charge our consumers' energy for sitting on their power lines. They're supposed to be there the first hour or anything over an hour, then they have to pay us to be there. They're the biggest taxpayer in the state, they print to every organization and say, we're not gonna pay. So they want to change the rates, I charge this rate, you charge that rate, they got into a big fight and they set a flat rate. Then I have to try and figure out, or someone in my organization can figure out how to to run this bill, to create this bill. But we don't know who to bill to, we don't know who to back, we don't know who it goes to. If they can't fix car accidents, then a car accident is anybody else's, it's the car accident, it's the at-fault driver who's at fault. Well, I can't find it out unless I pull a police report and I have to pay their police report file so that I can go look at it to see if I can tell who wasn't at fault. Again, you folks pay taxes, I don't believe, I should bill you and you're already paying. That is my total mistake, you should not pay me more than you already paid, which you paid. Live within my means. But when you commit a crime, you have to to pay the fine. Now, if that fine comes back to us, just like it happened today, we went mutually and we just found it out today.
Right.
So to me, it's starting.
Yeah, yeah.
The, we cannot, we cannot, underlying bold, italicized, we cannot write tickets. There's nothing I can do, if you have an illegal fire on your property, I can do nothing about it, nor can the township. It has to be a law enforcement official, typically the DNR. The DNR officer was was called to that incident, I couldn't remember it um because it was in the middle of the storm we were in and and this person did not use their app. And it caused, he broke a half broccoli and stuffed on his broccoli, so. But the officer did did find him, he made for court, the court did say that you pay restitution to these three fire departments. So I created a bill, which is very easy to do, I pushed all the keys on your bill. Um, I give it to the clerk, the clerk sent it to the bill, based on what the court order says. That is the only time I believe we should charge anybody. Now, if you wanna get into citizens versus uh visitors, I get that, but not like that's now I gotta track down people from knows where and try to track them down and and I don't wanna waste. If you wanna talk about what we're gonna recoup in money in a year, I spent la, I spent more or less, we'll give fuel, you know, we probably get back. Fired me around for five hours and what do we, what did they, what did the bill, what did you say it was?
Four hundred and seventy.
Four, four hundred and seventy bucks?
Yeah.
The tool I lost was half that price.
Right.
I I I mean, we're not gonna, we are by no means gonna get rich, but if you ever charge everybody, I would, it would never happen. This, this is gonna be
And the logistical hassle would be
Yeah, but the numbers are gonna be, we may have a year where we're really good. But if we stop building, we had, we used to get, physically going back and looking at the budgets, we had a huge increase because we were running these power lines, consumers changed their policy and now they have people out faster, they get charged for it. So it's the cost for us doing business, but there's not gonna be an increase. And I I I can bill car insurances again, but that, I just I never, in my, my career, I thought that we are not a money making institution. Probably, you know, I don't, we are funded by the taxpayers, not by their pockets. Because they had an accident, they had an accident, not a they're calling purposes, they call them accidents. Was it an accident, I'm not going to make that, especially then what happens when it comes to takeout, you know, how do you go after, I have to record it then. The number of times it's gonna happen, so
Yeah, yeah, I think
I'm good with anything from the courts, if the courts say that we we bill them, then that's it. That's what I have to do, that's what the resolution is saying. Other than that, it doesn't
Does the board have any other thoughts?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to get, I'm like first person that doesn't live in the township. That doesn't know that, but that gets to be so complicated.
Right.
We're gonna, we're gonna spend more money on our resources trying to like
Well, I had to create it, I can't, I can't bill it, I have to send it to her, she has to bill, has to go to the treasurer, he's gonna follow her, he'll walk through it. Now, he was in for thirty-seven dollars.
Correct.
That'll be buying you a pizza, you mom.
I mean, I agree, but if there is a situation where the court, where they're, where they're forces they have to pay restitution, and for us to pursue, we would, we would just, we would use more resources to pursue.
Well, we, we had a couple here in the township, I know some citizens remember it, we had a couple here in the township. A person doesn't live in the township, we couldn't track them down, they don't know how the fire started. It should be a ticket of mole offense, but now the law, law has to go after it, would I wait till they finalize a a case? Or do I go after the homeowner? Now, he has nothing to do with it on his property, but caused a problem, that goes a ticket of mole offense.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, I ain't got time for that.
Yeah, yeah, it's weirdly complex.
It's weird, it's too complex.
Which is why I think the resolution was never passed.
Oh, I'm sure, I, I, you're, they came up, uh which panel, which panel?
What do you want?
Eleven, twelve, twelve, right, uh twelve is she came up, I think? Because this came up before, remember with that, it was Kristen Ford, they wanted to try and delve into it and just got
So we'll just keep it simple.
I did, just keep it simple.
Simple.
Kiss it, maybe.
Get something actually in place.
Right, I'm good.
Any other board comment on that? Alright, we will go to late treatments, special assessment reviews. And for our special assessments, we have a yearly review in September. If something was going to change, we obviously will be blowed on it because all of these are according to schedule. And this is Westlake retreatments, Northlake retreatments, the Lankley treatments, the Middlelake retreatments. They're all going according to the same schedule. We compare how much money it has in the fund, how much we've expended, and then how much people are going to be charged on the special assessments with no change, it's an informative item. Anyone has questions, you can definitely try to answer them. Any board comment? No? Alright, we'll move on to our second public comment. So feel free to comment about anything in particular, and I know we will definitely have someone from the library making a comment. And if you would like to come up to the lecture, say your name and address and let us know what you're speaking on.
Mary Jean Smith, eighteen ninety-two, Westlake Road. I was just wondering, how many times who comes and checks about the weeds in the lake?
Pila, Professional Lake Management, so they're a large company that only does
Okay, now are they the ones that treat the lake?
Yes.
Because when I called a year or so ago to find out something they said, to call, when they're gonna be treating again, oh, we don't know until so-and-so checks it and tells us what to do, like it was two different people.
As far as I know, they've been doing both for a long time.
I believe it's two different generations of Pila.
Yeah, they went to different
Different parts of the company.
It's people that check it out, because it made it sound like it was almost two different companies, like you had to talk.
Because they
I left messages several times with the gentleman to ask him about different weeds, never got any return back. So I was just wondering, how do they know if they don't check periodically more than once, what other weeds have popped up?
They check every month, that doesn't mean they treat every month, they treat according to what is needed, but they check once a month.
Okay, they actually come to the lake and look.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I was just wondering, because with the high waters that we had, things have changed in in the lakes because of all the dirt coming out from the soil, from the lawns and stuff, there's different things now growing that I was just wondering if they're treating for that type of stuff, so they do come and do all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, one other question, um, I was wondering, Chief, what what kind of cases are you, for a hundred and sixty-one cases, what are they?
Everything.
Everything, fire, most of the majority of
Fire incidents, um, false alarm, if you, you include that in the report, Jeff?
It's included in the report, so it's on the PDF I like.
Okay, alright, I was just curious.
No, no problem, seventy-seven percent were medical.
Okay.
Uh, eight percent were good intent calls, which would be assisting a citizen that falls down, it would be anything non-hazardous. A hazardous condition would be a power line down, a service call could be, uh, nine percent go out and help, um
You can have this.
Somebody, yeah.
I was, I was just, I was just curious, because wow.
Yeah, and that, so yeah, they're all working down typically, we're down about sixty percent medical and the remaining fifteen, forty percent is other services, fires, fires, non-hazardous conditions, um, oil, fuel spills, because they'll be anything that it could be a police matter, the police calls because it's really their problem, but they call us because they don't want to see their problem, but it can't be our problems. Yeah. It's, it's, it's true, fires, it's not, but yeah.
And what's the possibility of just, of you just postponing your open house?
Well, so we we talked about that and and the struggle becomes, um, we like to do it during fire prevention practices in October. It falls in line with schools, it falls in line with we're not opposed to doing that as we, either, it just becomes then, what is a convenience then? Everybody knows that, anybody is a convenience then? Everybody knows that, anybody that knows anything about, it's normal. We joke to, a free month of hot dogs, because you, every night, somebody, another fire station had an open house, and you could get a free meal for a month. The parents didn't have to cook for a month. I'm not, that's pretty true.
Yeah.
But we haven't, so we wouldn't. The problem is, maybe we do ours in an outdoor, awkward time of the year. When are we going to, we can't do it until the spring. Well, then by the spring, are we, if we do, we're going to go in next year. Then are we going to marry it back up?
That's where you change it, so.
Right. We, we've tried every variance, and we haven't come up with one. I just, it's quite, I'm waiting for, I'm just waiting for the big epiphany to hit me in the head. It hasn't hit me yet. I got whacked in the head over the weekend, but it didn't help. But I was hoping that someone's going to just light me up, either one of the ways, and say, "Do it or not do it, or postpone it, how do you postpone it?" I, I, I mean, I know we're going to be stuck in this kind of a condition for a long time, so to find a new normal. And I just don't want to take away from some of the things that citizens expect. And then I don't promote the lighting, and then I have to spend more of my time and don't have to explain why I did what I did. When I really didn't do it enough because I didn't want to do this, because I wanted the best interest for other citizens. It's all, it's all really care about you.
One more.
You're right.
One more thing, with all the golf and ORD now, is there going to be, like, can you do a mailing so people know what the rules are? I mean, it's going to be a whole new thing. It'll happen probably in the spring because things are now going to be dying down, and everybody's going to be putting them away. But why not take and send out a mailing to people so that it's all known what the rules are ahead of time? Like the age of what the driver should be.
Right.
Different things like that.
We could do a mailing like that, like a general Township mailing. You're looking at a few thousand dollars for it. We can just have it posted online, that anyone that wants to look at it can look at it.
Okay. I just, I just think that that way, everybody has received it. There's no question about it versus people that don't look online and see those different things. I don't know. Is it possible to include a letter like that in with taxes?
Yeah.
Something else along the same mailing that you would do? Or wouldn't the additional...
That type of thing has been done before. At least we cut it down.
It's not good.
Because I love that. I mean, I think people need to see it on the white light.
Robin Wednesday, six seven nine five, North Lake Road. On the lake situation, PLM, I know, the lady that we used to contact was Jamie Conroy, and she always was very responsive. But you should be getting a mailing in the spring.
Oh, I do.
With this schedule.
I do, but I still...
And that's, that's the only thing that, they don't come out every month and check weeds, that I'm aware of. They have that on the, on your schedule when they're going to come and check the weeds.
Right.
And that's the only time they do it.
Exactly. That's, that's why I was wondering.
Right.
Do they really know what's going on in the lakes?
Yeah. Because they actually get in the boat and go down your lake.
Right, right.
And they only do that according to that schedule. And I know that there is a lot of newer people that are in the area, whichever, but, you know, it might be worthwhile to find out from PLM how many of these people aren't getting a schedule. Maybe they need to update their list of names and addresses to make sure that people are getting there. But I've never had them be unresponsive. They've always been very good at calling you back or emailing you back, you know. But I don't know if there's a different person assigned to each lake, but I just know Twin Lake used to be Jamie Conroy, unless, I knew she's still there.
They just made me think that this company treated, when they heard from this company what to treat. You know, they just send out their surveyors.
That's when how I was like...
Yeah, they send out their people to check, and then they let them know.
Right, okay.
Findings, so.
Yeah, so just different divisions, so they can come.
Right, right, so.
Yeah. Yeah, they totally, they check every month.
No. It's on the, it's on the schedule. That's it though.
All right.
Great.
Okay. Rachel Church, here Dalton Township Librarian, also sixty-two thirty-four Fallow Road. One thing we brought up about the carts before I get started is, we talked about having the orange triangle on the backs of those. I'd really would like to see that, because I have neighbors where their grandkids are riding around the circles there all the time and bumping over and probably tipping over at times, as the way the, the road is there. Johnston Road is, is rough. And I'd like to see something like that. Maybe that teaches a little caution. They saw that, caution sign. So, just, just my two cents on that. Then, we have new newsletters for our fall and winter events. I've got a few on the table here, a few on the lobby. We haven't had one yet, and they're available. We have a lot of cool things going on. One of the newest things is we now have a bookmobile again, which MADL, Muskegon Area District Library, has not had for a long time. And the Township had stopped paying for one, and now MADL has taken that under our umbrella to make that another one of our branches. We're also going to start a satellite branch in Lexington Township. And it's just going to be a small thing on Giles Road and the Race Popper Administration Building. And so we're looking forward to that opening. I don't hold a date for that one yet, but the bookmobile is on the road. We're going to different events, and you can look on our website and see that schedule of when that's happening. Santa's coming to the library. We have a new app that you can put on your phone, your tablet, your device, to see all your library items and placeholds. Wonderful things going on. One thing, I was thinking with Chief Stiles, he had to go, but we did a lot of online events last two years. And I don't know if they could do a tour, an online tour, and maybe if enough people go on their Facebook page to do that, maybe there'd be a prize involved, something like that. We did a lot of that, and some of them were very successful. So we'd like, you know, to see those kind of things for us. Summer reading, we have this year. We had more readers, believe it or not, even though most of our events were online and done virtually, and we did not have any big in-person events. We still had a hundred and twenty-six readers, which is more than what we'd had in the three years previously, signup for summer reading program. So it was very successful for that. Five hundred and seventy-two books were read by adults. Children read eight hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and fifteen minutes. So that was great. We gave away a smartwatch, a fifty-dollar Meyer gift card, a team game night pack. And then one of our families won a family four-pack to the Air Zoo, down in Kellam Zoo, which is a great gift, worth very much. And another family won a pack for the scoop, our new ice cream place down the road. So just wanted to let you guys know what was going on there. And my cohort here, coworker, Sax from the Library for the Visually and here, has a few words for you.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak to you today. Like Rachel said, I am at the Library for the Visually and Physically Disabled. I'm the lead librarian there. And I just wanted to inform you of two programs that we have, just in case you are unaware. I put these here on our desks, and I can also put them on the table here in case anyone's interested. The first I wanted to talk about is our talking book program. It's a nationwide program that is completely free. If anyone qualifies with low vision or physical disability that prevents them from reading, they qualify to get audiobooks and a player sent to their home at no cost. We have over a hundred thousand titles with the Library of Congress, and everything is through the US mail. You do not need a Wi-Fi connection. And we just send a player with big easy buttons and cartridges, and we have pretty much every genre available, and lots of nonfiction, like history, war, gardening, all that good stuff. We also have magazines like Good Housekeeping, Wired, Consumers Report. So if anyone is having a struggle with reading regular print, they're having arthritis in their hands, they can't hold a book, you, we very well qualify to this program, and we'll send you audiobooks. And I will work with you to get you what you want to read. And then the other program, which just started this year, is our homebound service. So our homebound service is for people who live in the metal service area, which I believe all of Dalton is a part of that area. If you cannot come to the library for whatever reason, if you are homebound, we will send you through the US Postal Service, three books every two weeks through the mail, any ones that we have throughout the system. And you will get them sent to your house, and we will pay for them to come back, and we will just send them to you, so you do not have to come to the library at all. And if anyone has any questions, I will be here for a moment. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you. Good. Any other public comment? Last call. All right. Then I am looking, well, is there any board comment? No? Then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Any, any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you adjourn?